Man.
He was staring at me. He was like.
Gonna be.
Okay, good evening. Uh, open session is now called to order. It is six forty-one PM, June twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-five. Ms. Vaughn.
Ms. Foster.
Yes.
Mr. Crown over.
Yes, or here.
Mr. Hikes.
Here.
Ms. Jones.
Here.
Mr. Marston.
Present.
Dr. Ms. Hubbard.
One day, present.
Dr. Collins Adams.
Here.
We have a call.
Okay.
I move to approve the agenda for tonight's meeting.
Yes.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Vaughn.
Ms. Foster.
Yes.
Mr. Crown over.
Yes.
Mr. Hikes.
Yes.
Ms. Jones.
Yes.
Mr. Marston.
Yes.
Ms. Hubbard.
Yes.
Dr. Collins Adams.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Call for motion to approve the minutes from our previous meeting.
I'll make a motion to approve the June tenth, twenty twenty-five regular meeting minutes.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Vaughn.
Ms. Foster.
Yes.
Mr. Crown over.
Yes.
Mr. Hikes.
Yes.
Ms. Jones.
Yes.
Mr. Marston.
Yes.
Ms. Hubbard.
Yes.
Dr. Collins Adams.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Call for motion to approve the minutes from our special board meeting, June twelfth, twenty twenty-five.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Vaughn.
Ms. Foster.
Yes.
Mr. Crown over.
Yes.
Mr. Hikes.
Yes.
Ms. Jones.
Yes.
Mr. Marston.
Yes.
Ms. Hubbard.
Yes.
Dr. Collins Adams.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Now we have our reports from the superintendent.
Good evening. President Collins Adams, Vice President Emily Hubbard, members of the board and to our listening audience. This evening, we don't have any presentations per se, but I do have an update. There were a list of questions submitted by Board Member Conover regarding train. Cabinet members are working on the responses and plan to have the responses ready by Friday, um, June twenty-seventh. This morning, we met with our brokers, um, regarding our insurance and discussing coverage, which would ultimately increase. Tonight, you will hear from Casey Milberg, who is the Policy Director from City of St. Louis in regards to our continued partnership and using some of schools, some of the schools to serve as host sites for FEMA so that we can help our families who are in need of assistance in applying for FEMA. Myself and others from the district will be attending a town hall meeting hosted by a state representative on Thursday, June twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-five, at the Child and Family Empowerment Center. Members of cabinet will be donating a total of six hundred dollars to the Eminical Leadership Council of Missouri Supporting AFT Local four-twenty as we collectively support our St. Louis neighbors and friends in recovering from the tornado damage. We are working on a plan with St. Louis Foundation, St. Louis Public Schools Foundation to be able to provide food during the summer once summer school is over. In the meantime, there's information regarding meals served by the St. Louis Public Libraries that is posted on our website. I had the opportunity to attend a conference at DESI for first-year superintendents where information was shared about compliance, school finance, data reporting, transportation, MOSIS data, M six-six, college and career readiness and other things related to compliance. I also had the opportunity to attend the National Alliance for Black School Educators, which is NASB in Atlanta, and the focus was on student outcomes, connecting with our legislators and school board relationships. And that concludes my report at this time, so we can. We'll ride along.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Barisha Day. Moving to our consent agenda items. Item ten point one, Community Partner Union Station Hotel.
Uh, I'll make a motion to approve the entirety of the consent agenda for the meeting. We just, we don't need to make the motion to do that, right? We just want to talk, you want to talk one through one through the.
I'm just gonna.
All right.
Okay. Uh, a motion, uh, motion for ten point one.
Sorry, I'm confused. So, we don't usually vote on the consent. Are we voting to approve the items on the consent agenda or voting to put them on the July eleventh meeting? What are you asking?
I would need to know if we're going to move this as a whole and I'd call on each one of them. I would need to know if we're gonna move this as a whole and then call on each one of them, or?
To move it to the July, I think it's eleventh meeting. Okay, great. I would make a motion to approve the consent agenda for the July eleventh meeting.
Second.
Any discussion? Mr. Marston.
Um, for item ten nineteen, it's been replaced by item ten twenty-five. So I think ten nineteen should be taken out of the consent agenda. And I have some questions or comments about some of the other consent agenda items also, but that's, that one would be, uh, change what's on the consent agenda for our next meeting.
So noted, Ms. Vaughn. Further discussion?
Yes, I have a question about, I'm sorry. I have a question on ten point one, uh, Community Partners Union Station Hotel to support, uh, Patrick Henry students and staff with the end-of-year gifts, hats and gloves. So my question is, we're approving all of this ahead of time. Will we in the future or at the next board meeting, uh, have someone on here that will, uh, perhaps be working to obtain clothing, shoes, and underwear, that kind of thing, for our students who, uh, were in the tornado, that kind of thing? I see the gloves and the book bags, but.
Right.
A lot of our students.
Thank you.
Yeah.
So right now, we do have, um, a hub over at Metro that has items such as clothing, shoes, you name it, hygiene, all of those things over there. Um, we also have, uh, a hub upstairs on the third floor where families are able to come and pick out items that they are in need of.
So my question then is, uh, just say for instance around Fountain Park, uh, do we have anything that's more centralized, uh, where they can go, a hub over there to shop?
At this point, um, we don't have anything outside of a location at Nance. We have something at Metro, and then we have something upstairs. And so if we need to add another location, and that is the will of the board, we will, um, huddle and see how we can make those resources happen.
Okay, thank you.
Can you tell me that location again, Board Member Jones? Can you tell me that location again?
Oh, I was asking the, uh, the location around Fountain Park.
Fountain Park, okay.
Oh, I'm sorry. A lot of those, uh, families are, would be clo, that would be closer, the hub would, even if they had to walk. Because a lot of people don't have vehicles now and they're, you know, and Metro is a real stretch, and especially if you're carrying a bunch of things and you have children, you need something a little bit more centralized. Or even if we had someone that would volunteer a moving van or something with those items, and they can set up a temporary giveaway.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Jones, and thank you, Dr. Barisha Day. Further discussion? On any of the consent agenda items? Ms., Mr. Conover?
Yeah, I had, uh, just a couple of questions on, uh, ten twenty-six. I was hoping I could get a couple of answers on that. Um, in relation to, uh, consent agenda item ten twenty-six, uh, it was my understanding, and maybe I'm wrong, so happy to be corrected, that we were fully staffed on the audit team. Is that correct or incorrect? Uh, I would hope, the superintendent or whoever.
I'm sorry, Mr. Conover, I was, uh, could you restate that?
Yeah. Mr. Paul, are you handing something out? Could we get that now?
Yeah.
Okay.
All right.
Um, yes, in relation to item ten twenty-six, which is, uh, a contract request to continue the consulting of someone for the audit, uh, auditor services. It was my understanding that our audit team was fully staffed, and I was just looking for, uh, if that was true or not, if I was right about that.
So when we talk about the consulting contract, the consultants helped us to submit all the things that we needed. They helped a lot. There was a huge lift, um, in getting the audit done. And so they helped then, um, they provided some guidance, and then making sure that we have that same level of support is why they are being asked to return.
So this is kind of like help on the financial, like it's help for the finance department.
Yes.
Rather than internal audit.
It's help for the finance team so that we can make sure that we focus on submitting all the things that we need to submit for the audit.
Sorry, well, the answer to the staffing of the audit team was yes or no?
When you say audit team, help me understand specifically what you mean by audit.
That was my understanding, just from the folks that are involved in the audit. I mean, that's obviously broader than that, but folks that were specifically assigned to key pieces of the audit. Maybe I'm wrong about that, but happy to get clarification.
So this consultant is helping the finance department with the audit.
Uh-huh, gotcha, okay.
With the annual audit, the single, the information that we just received with that audit, yes.
And so the request is because we, there seems to be a need to continue her services for the audits that are still ongoing. Is that correct?
So we have a twenty-five, the year twenty-five, we have that audit, and so we want them to help us make sure we submit it on time. And so they are helping with the corrective action plan. They're helping making sure that we have everything that we need to submit on time.
Okay.
I sense some unrest.
Yeah, uh, I'm just curious, I was, I don't think involved in the decision to bring this, uh, person on board. Uh, how do we get this recommendation specifically?
This was a recommendation that was approved by our previous board.
Yeah.
And there was, um, a lot of unrest as relates to Ruben Brown saying, you all need to submit, you all need to submit, you all need to submit, you need some help, you need to submit things. And so with the help of this consulting firm, with the onboarding of our Chief Financial Officer, with the onboarding of our fiscal controller, we were able to do those things, um, with the finance team.
Yeah, I understood. How, I was just wondering how the recommendation came to us for this particular contractor.
Got it, okay.
Yeah. Oh, that's a question. Yeah, sorry. Uh, the question is, how did we get recommended, uh, I think it's Harrison Lee Associates as the consultant for this particular? Did we put out an RFP? How did this process go?
This was a recommendation from the audit, um, group that we work with. You need, um, to find and a consultant to help you all.
So Ruben Brown recommended that we find a consultant. Did they recommend this consultant?
They recommended a couple.
A couple, okay. And we chose this consultant?
Yes.
Okay. That was the information I was looking for, thank you. Um, that's, that's all for now on ten twenty-six.
Thank you, Mr. Conover. Uh, any additional questions to items on the consent agenda?
Yes, I have a question on item ten two-nine. And so the question would be, um, I have some concerns about real estate, especially since the tornado. And, um, we're just saying we're gonna pay them, what, sixty thousand dollars, uh, to be an advisor to the district? Uh, we recently put out an RFP for a real estate broker. Have we gotten any more responses? And if not, then can we get a copy of what the RFP would look like, uh, once you reissue it at sixty thousand dollars? Because we have a lot of real estate that was undervalued. And so I would really like for the board to have an opportunity to take a look at whomever it is that we're going to be hiring in terms of real estate brokerage service.
So there were, there was an RFP that was put out. Um, and it was put out more than once, and so right now, we are at the point where we have two responses. And the information is available. It's inside the, um.
Excuse me, so within that document, we do have a scoring sheet, and that was from the brokers that actually applied, from the RFP.
Yeah.
No.
Mic on. Uh, I think, uh, Board Member Jones has requested the RFP for, uh, the brokerage services, and she's being told that the scoring summary from the RFP is the RFP, but that's not accurate.
No.
Okay.
We just said that there's a scoring.
Yes, okay, I understand.
This is not an RFP.
Thank you.
Board Member Jones, you want this, the RFP?
Yes, I do, yes, because I'm wondering why people are not applying.
With sixty thousand dollars, though. Is that an average pay for a service like that?
I'm not sure that is sixty thousand dollars.
I thought it says sixty thousand.
That's it.
Did it?
So the services, um, is in the amount of eighty-five thousand, which is for marketing to at least, and it is commission-based. So at the sale of properties, uh, the brokerage firm will receive a commission.
Okay. So on top of the eighty-five, then they would make a commission on that.
And when they're, do they have to present whatever it is that they're speaking of to the real estate board or to the board?
To the real estate committee, and then that recommendation would come to the board.
All right, thank you.
I had a couple related questions for ten twenty-nine. So is, is the recommendation to approve EXP Realty then as, as the, uh, as our broker?
Yes.
Okay, so, okay. And then how long has it been since we had a real estate broker?
So, uh, the district has been without an active real estate broker for quite some time, and it was due to personnel.
Okay, so there, uh, when you say personnel, that means, um, like SLPS personnel?
Meaning things that we can't discuss.
Got, okay, got it, got it, great. Okay. Is it, approximately, how long was it that we?
Approximately, it's been at least two years that I'm aware of. It could have been longer than two years.
Okay. Okay.
It was longer than two years, and they didn't do a good job either. They were terrible.
Uh, Madam President, on the, on this, uh, subject as well, I just want to make sure I understand. So there's, uh, for the July eighth meeting, I had eleventh wrong, sorry. Uh, there's gonna be a recommendation to approve EXP Realty as the real estate brokerage services. Is there an anticipated step, uh, to take that to the real estate committee before we have the July eighth meeting?
The goal would be so, but we need to have a real estate meeting.
Yes, understood. Yep, thank you.
Yes, thank you. That's why we put it here for the line.
Understood. Yep, thank you.
So my question is, uh, there's background information on EXP, correct? Is that background information for the public as well?
We would get that for the public as well.
All right, thank you.
So that will be presented in the real estate committee in an open session as well.
So they're the only ones, we don't, I mean, that's only one group. We didn't have any other options?
We had more than one. And that, according to the scorecard, is what we, what we have to go by.
And who did, who's in charge of the scorecard? Was it the real estate committee?
No.
No? I'm trying to understand who would.
I think one of them was Tim Schultz, maybe? Um, that, on, on the scorecard, there were names.
I know, but he's not, that's not his area of expertise, so I'm just wondering why it wouldn't be the real estate committee that would be selecting that type of position versus somebody, I mean, I'm not familiar with Mr. Schultz, all of his positions, but he's not, that's not his area that he's listing in the district as someone who knows about real estate all.
Mr. Watson?
So when the RFP was issued, the evaluation team consists of the, the Director of Real Estate, uh, the Contract Compliance Manager, which is Mr. Schultz, and, uh, the Director of Operations, uh, Ms. Erinetta Brookins. Um, uh, they did the score and the evaluation, uh, but we will, as it was just stated, bring this to the real estate committee uh, so that we could look, get a presentation, um, for the public, and then you could ask any questions at that point in time, and then we'd make our recommendations to the board.
And you'll have, I'm sorry, and you'll have the real estate person here that you're speaking of to speak about their expertise?
The two, the, the, those that submitted in a proposal, yes.
All right, thank you.
So the real estate committee will get this information prior to our next board meeting? So you will have a real estate meeting prior to the next board meeting?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay.
Uh, President Collins Adams?
Yes, sir.
Could I move to, uh, ten twenty-nine off the consent agenda for July and as a separate item for action?
Yes.
Thank you.
Additional consent agenda item discussions? Ms. Foster?
Uh, yes. I was wondering if someone could explain the difference between, um, our partnership with Cisco and Old Time, specifically servicing our students who, um, are enrolled in culinary programs in the district. Both bar reports indicated that these were the primary sources for culinary arts and culinary programs. Just want to know the difference, because those are two different prices. One is six thousand, I believe, and the other is twenty. It's.
I need you to state the item number.
Ten point eight and ten point ten, thank you. This is the updated agenda.
Yes, Dr. Dino? Okay. Ten point eight and?
Um, Cisco is ten point ten, and Old Time Produce Incorporated is ten point eight. Just what the difference is in services.
Thank you. So we do purchase various food items from both of these vendors. Not, like, we may be looking for something that we need for a specific day, and one vendor might not have it, and we would purchase from the other. And so we have, it's important that we have more than one option for students.
Could you speak a little louder?
Oh, sorry. We do purchase from both vendors. Sometimes it depends on if we need a specific item. One has that the other does not, or if they don't have it at the time that we need it. Um, but we do, we do use both in our culinary programs.
Thank you, Dr. Dino. Additional items?
Yeah, I just wanted to make a comment on a sort of collection. So for ten twenty, ten forty-seven, ten forty-eight, and ten fifty, they're all, um, agreements with special schools for students who have special needs to help them get a free, appropriate public education, and the total for those four is two point one five million dollars. And the reason I'm bringing it up is, it's, it's just remarkable how much SLPS does. Charter schools aren't doing this. I just wanted to point that out.
Thank you, Mr. Marston. We do support our students. Additional items for discussion?
Yes, um, because Mr. Marston brought it up, ten point twenty, um, I'll just voice it out loud. What is the barrier for providing these services for our students within the city of St. Louis versus busing them out or transporting them to St. Charles County? And I think this was also asked on the question catcher, but. It was answered, but I would like it voiced over. Thank you.
Certainly. So these different private separate programs have different. Certainly. So these different private separate programs have different specialty areas that they support students in. And the decisions that are made, like for this one, which is farther away, is because that's the program that has been identified as having the best fit for that particular student at that point in time. There may, there, these programs also have some limited capacity. So while there may be a program closer that may be full, and so this is the one that has the ability to take our students. It's always our first preference to be able to serve our students with IEPs in St. Louis Public Schools, in our school settings. These are only used when it's determined with, with the IEP team that students' faith cannot be met within the, within our city schools. And then we identify programs that best meet that individual student's needs. And the Behavior Helper specifically provides some therapeutic services that maybe aren't available at some of the other ones, or the other ones don't have space available for our students.
Thank you. And then a quick question, like, I think it's a yes or no. Do we provide bus monitors for all of the buses and transportation that bus our students out to St. Charles?
All students receive transportation, and if a bus monitor is called for in their IEP as a related service, they would receive a bus monitor as a related service.
Thank you, Board Member Foster and Board Member Marston for your comments regarding the service for our students with special needs on both ends of the spectrum, intellectual disabilities and our gifted students. Any other? Mr. Conover?
Yeah, I just wanted to, this is mostly a comment on 1028. I'm glad to see that the Midas Family Foundation is helping us out in housing some of our families and students related to the devastation of the May 16th tornado. I would hope they would do so. We, they got quite a large abatement for that hotel, which comes straight out of the pockets of our students. So I hope that maybe we can increase that number in the future. But again, I would like to thank them for stepping up to the plate on this one.
Thank you so much. Yes, we will. Ms. Jones? I do have a question about, let's see what items is. It's the item consent agenda, item Growing Green Horticultural Services. Item number? Item number... Goodness.
10.45.
10.45. So it has, I think, July 8th to July 8th? Is that just for one month, or that we're getting that service for 3,000 some dollars?
Mr. Watson?
So this is for your service?
Oh, yeah.
And in the, in the bar, the board action report, the timeline for implementation will begin, if the board approves it, through June 30th of 2026.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Jones. Thank you, Mr. Watson. Additional, Mr. Marston?
Yeah, a couple more. On 10.41, it's $20 million of Prop S funding to do renovations at Central VPA and Collegiate. And my understanding is the project is being rebid due to a change in scope, and that this is a placeholder until we get the bids. And then I think it'll go to the real estate committee, and then a recommendation will be presented to the board. So my question is, should this 10.41 item be moved to items for information instead of the consent agenda? Because I'm not sure what we're voting on. If it's in the consent agenda, there, the vendor is still to be determined. And since we don't know the vendor, I'm not sure how we can really know the exact price.
And so the request is to move it, to remove it from the consent agenda?
Until we have a vendor?
To remove it from the consent agenda and move it to items for information. And then later, after the real estate committee has a recommendation, it would show up again on a consent agenda, I think, is the way it should work.
Thank you. We will, we will remove it from the consent agenda.
I do have a question. So are we using Prop S monies to do this renovation? Is this where the money's coming from? Oh, okay.
Yes.
Well, this is now, well, it's kind of related. So are we using any more money on Yatman? Because after I looked at the windows, I went over to look at the windows, they need replacing, all of them. Not just the glass, but the whole window.
So Yatman currently is receiving upgrades to their HVAC systems. We do, there, there are, I know we do need to replace those windows, particularly when it rains, we get water intrusion. So that project will come later, but for now, the, the most recent project is being more energy efficient in the building. So there's a, a lot of HVAC projects in terms of taking the unit vents out and giving them a more up-to-date HVAC system.
So that's where the delay is going to be in returning those students back to Yatman, waiting on that system to be installed, and then waiting on the windows? Because when I went up to the door and I, I looked, it said windows. It didn't say... You know, because I was trying to understand the reason why it might be closed for a longer period of time.
So with the, the current project, it was anticipated to be completed before the start of the school year. But due to the, the storm, now we're, after we've got the assessment with the city, with the insurance company, then we'll let, let you all know our next steps in terms of the repairs and the cost for those repairs. But there were some damaged windows because of the tornado, and that'll come with our recommendations with a contractor to move forward with those projects to the board.
Okay, so there's no estimated timeline on when that might be completed, before the end of the year?
Yeah, we don't have that information at this time.
All right, thank you. Go ahead, Mr. Marston, I have a question.
I just wanted to note that eight of the items on tonight's consent agenda are for community partnerships, and I think that's really great to see.
Thank you, thank you. I do have a question with, in line with the question that Board Member Jones mentioned. Will we see this in any other schools also that will get an additional timeline as we go?
Updates will be provided as soon as we receive information, solid information.
Thank you.
Yes.
Got it, thank you. All right. Any additional? Got it, thank you. Item 11, our items for discussion? Additional items? No? We, we don't have any? To move them all forward. Okay. Got it, thank you. So it's been moved in second to be able to move our consent agenda items, 10.1 to 10.58. Call for vote? We've had a motion in second.
Ms. Foster?
Yes.
Mr. Conover?
Yes.
Mr. Hikes?
Yes.
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Marston?
Yes.
Ms. Hubbard?
Yes.
Dr. Collins-Adams?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Okay, we move on to additional items for discussion? And items, excuse me, and items for information?
I don't know if this is the appropriate time, but I just wanted to make a quick comment on the questions related to train. Those were submitted by the board, not just myself, but also members, Marston, and I believe President Collins-Adams as well. So just wanted to make sure that the questions about train are not just my own, they're also the board's in general, so.
Yes.
Yeah, thank you.
I do have a question about hazardous waste removal. I know that we have allowed the city of St. Louis to utilize our school grounds for bringing hazardous material to the schools. And are we paying for this extra consultant to come in and make sure that the area is cleared? Especially since the, I think, I understand they're asking for an additional time to utilize our, our space on our school grounds. Are we paying?
Dr. Arishadeh? There is no payment from St. Louis Public Schools.
To the city of St. Louis?
The city of St. Louis, no, there's no payment.
All right, thank you. Any additional items for information? Thank you, Ms. Jones. Thank you, Mr. Conover.
Are we on 13 point? I'm sorry, go ahead.
We're, we're on 12.1.
12.1. Credit card statements? Mr. Conover?
No, we're good, sorry.
Items for action, section number 13, 13.1, 13.2, and 13.3. 13.1, the city of St. Louis and St. Louis Public Schools MOU, the First Amendment with the city. Call for motion?
I guess I have a question before I make the motion. Did Ms. Milberg, is she going to represent for us, or I didn't know what the plan was here?
Is someone here to? Is someone here to present?
So we have two, the first one is the amendment for the debris collection site, and that is to extend it until July, and then we have the next one, the FEMA. Thank you. Ms. Milberg is our policy director for the city of St. Louis. Good evening.
Red, can you hear me? Wonderful. First, I apologize in advance, I'm getting over some illness, so if I start coughing, I will duck over. So please excuse me in advance if that happens. For the record, Casey Milberg, Policy Director in Mayor Spencer's office.
Yes, I'm Julian Nix. I'm the Deputy Operating Officer and Operations Chief for the tornado disaster response for the city.
Yes, and so on this item, the city did request an extension to allow the city to fully clean up those sites. Provided in the initial memorandum of agreement was that the city would take care of all costs, all services for site cleanup. So we wanted to make sure that we had ample time to do that. So I believe the extension is for an additional period of four weeks, if memory serves correct on that item. So that is the purpose of the extension, is to ensure that the city can fully do that. I do not know if it will take the entire full weeks, but we do want to allow ample time, should that be needed, you know, for, for any reason. So happy to receive any additional comments or questions on that item.
Mr. Conover?
Thanks, Ms. Milberg. I just wanted to ask a question about this. So when we reviewed this initially, when we were voting on this, we were pretty concerned about the cleanup process, and we're aware of the timelines of the MOU. Just wondering if this is something we could have anticipated in advance for the extra four weeks, or sort of how we ended up in the spot where we need an additional four weeks for cleanup?
Yeah, so happy to. So a lot of this is, we want to make sure we're in compliance with Missouri DNR regulations as they evaluate the site. They have until a certain period of time before they can get people on site to do the full review combined with the debris, and they just want to kind of do checks beforehand. So it was by a regulatory thing that we were not aware of at the time of the initial MOU.
So they have been scheduled to be able to come out to do the assessment, or we're still waiting?
Yes, they will be able to come out and do the assessment with the debris removed, with the four-week extension. Yeah, so they've come on to do the initial assessment, so I think now we're just waiting for the cleanup operations.
Thank you.
And we can absolutely, and we're happy to circle back on any timelines and dates and just share that with you all. I know it's been a little bit of a moving target with them coming on site and then corresponds going back and forth.
If, so that we'll have clarity, if you can send the timeline that you have, you know, and the information that you've already, that they've already come out, what the delay was, that they've already come out for the initial, and what the prospective date would be in the future.
I can do that.
Ms. Jones? Okay.
Yes.
My question is around the cleanup. I've done lead cleanup before, and I know that with the dry weather that we've been experiencing here in St. Louis, hot and what have, what have you, that when you start lifting and moving that type of debris around, you're going to spread that dust throughout the neighborhood. So my concern is for the structures that are surrounding the schoolyard as well. When they're moving it, are they going to wet it down, or how are they going to do this to make sure that persons that live close by are not breathing or inhaling, you know, the dust from the debris? And also, could you give us information, not only on that, but whether or not they've had any asbestos abatement that they had to do?
Yes. So during the entire protocol, we had regular testing, both air particles, the air, to ensure there was no contamination. There's no sign of asbestos or lead, and we followed DNR procedures for any management of hazardous materials that should no longer be on the property. And then in terms of any aspect of operations, we do, we do follow full protocols around dealing with hazard materials. And so if you were kind of at the debris sites, that includes continuous wetting of materials and things like that, to ensure that any particles up in the air are wetted down and then safely removed. So all protocols we will follow, will follow those similar protocols in any remaining efforts.
Okay, one last question in regards to that. So when you're bagging the trucks out with all the debris on it, are they bringing the street sweepers in to make sure they sweep the streets as well? Because I know if you're coming out, getting in your car, and you step in the street, you can walk it right back into your house, and it only takes a few small particles to poison a person with lead.
Yeah, so I do want to say again, there is no lead or asbestos on it. We've had several contaminations and tests directly on the lot and the debris that was there, and so we have had regular testing there. But in regards to any kind of cleanup efforts, yes, well, the, the commitment, and the initial guarantee from the MOU was that we would restore the property back to the way it was before we got there or better, and so we have every intention of honoring that commitment. And if there is any issue with street cleaning, you all can take my phone over directly, and we'll make sure we get cleaners out, but that should be part of the full commitment to clean up the site.
All right, thank you. Mr. Conover?
Yeah, just an additional question here. In relation to this MOU, I totally, I'm blanking on what I was about to ask. Give me one second, sorry. I'll have to pause, sorry, I lost it. I got it. Sorry about that. I just wanted a bit of an update here on the success of the program. So I don't know if, maybe we got some details on this, but was hoping just for some more details on, I think it ran about a week? Was it maybe a little bit longer than that? Did we get a lot of material from folks? I know there were some concerns about whether or not folks could even bring us materials, if that was something that was feasible for a lot of folks that were impacted by the tornado. So just, how did it go?
Yeah, so overall, it was, from our view, was a successful operation with both the National Guard. So we had both our National Guard officials there the whole time. We also had direct people there from the Health Department sharing active information about debris management for people who were bringing things out of their homes and off their streets. For our intent purposes, it was a hugely successful effort in terms of the element of debris we were able to remove out of neighborhoods and... of debris we were able to remove out of neighborhoods, and made it way more convenient than the process of picking it up by the street side. So, we feel very good about the operation. I don't have the exact, because I was more ready for the DRC, I don't have the exact tonnage of debris that was removed out of that area, but we reviewed it as a full, successful effort.
Sounds good, thank you. I mean, we would love those, that information when you're able to get it to us. And I would just like to say again, as I said last time, we, we are in favor of partnering with the city on things like this. We'd like to work with the city on this. We do like the information upfront as much as possible, and to have regular updates on what's going on with the MOU. Extending for the cleanup seems like it's a necessity here, not something we knew in advance. So, just something that, to keep in mind in the future, is that we are very in favor of doing stuff like this with the city, but as much communication as we can get in advance and during is very helpful. So, thank you.
Any additional questions?
One comment, if I may, I know just as a ballpark figure, I know this is prior to the debris sites concluding, but we know that the equivalent of, again, this is prior to them finishing their operations about a week before, the equivalent of 200 football fields piled one foot high of debris have been removed. And we still have quite a ways to go as a community. We have the debris on individuals' personal property as well. So, this is mostly property in the right, you know, debris in the right of way, what individuals, what contractors were able to start getting. But if that gives you a sense of the scope, it is tremendous, and we have so far to go. So, we're happy to provide that kind of detail to you all, for sure.
That's very, it's obviously horrendous to hear. It's shocking, but it's important for us to know. So, thank you so much. I did have one more question, if I may.
Yes.
In relation to the, there was a question about the Brick Bank last time. I didn't know if there were any updates on that front.
So, the initial business identified ended up not having the capacity to do it. However, there is one in the, I believe it's the Fourteenth Ward, that has come forward. And so, there are some means that are going to be stood up next week with that entity that are being facilitated by Alderman Aldridge as well. So, initial, the initial prop, the initial business unfortunately wasn't a viable model. This one, fingers crossed.
Thank you.
Any more discussions? At this time, we're going to call for a motion to, a vote for thirteen point one?
I'll make a motion to approve the amendment for the City of St. Louis and SLPS MOU regarding tornado fixing.
Second.
Ms. Foster?
Yes.
Mr. Conover?
With a commitment to being more precise, yes.
Mr. Hikes?
Yes.
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Marston?
Yes.
Ms. Hubbard?
Yes.
Dr. Collins Adams?
Yes.
Motion approved.
And then based on the presentation, we'll move down to item thirteen point three. Call for a motion?
Sorry, is there any additional information you all want to tell us about the FEMA MOU?
Yes, we would love to. We have quite a bit of information. It's a very exciting partnership. So, we received, we were fortunate to finally receive the Presidential Disaster Declaration on June ninth. It was a very long road to get there. We're very grateful that we are there. And on that same day, we actually had stood up the Disaster Assistance Center. A disaster assistance center is a more short-term, immediate needs, meet the immediate needs of the community kind of a facility. Where we are transitioning into with the Disaster Assistance Center closing on June twenty-sixth later this week, is longer-term disaster recovery centers that are based within the community, that can help individuals receive assistance directly from FEMA, from SBA, from other community partners, throughout the duration of the individual assistance application period, which goes through August eleventh of this summer. And so, we are standing up facilities in Zones A, B, and C, in the impact area, to try to make it as easy as possible for residents to receive services. FEMA will actively be there, SBA will actively be there. The kinds of services that you can expect to provide is actually sitting down with people, walking through unique circumstances. If you received an individual initial assistance and you have a question, or you were denied, or you have a particularly wonky, you know, unique situation that's impacting your family, that's the purpose of these centers, is to have you sit down in person with someone, get the kind of intensive interpersonal conversational support that you need. Everything from, you know, my home was passed down over generations. I don't have, you know, legal documentation. How can I think about, how can I think about getting assistance? What kind of assistance is available for me? You know, even talking through, my assistance has run out. Is there any additional assistance that could become available to me, such as through ongoing rental assistance? So, that's the purpose of these kinds of centers, is to provide, again, really, really, really personalized, really present throughout the duration of this assistance period, recognizing needs can evolve and will evolve, support for the community. And Julian and his team have done tremendous work in helping really stand up the actual nuts and bolts operations of this with FEMA, with SBA, with our state partners. So, I want to turn it over to him to talk about the nuts and bolts of how these sites will work in more detail.
Thank you, Casey. So, just a little bit more about FEMA, because I do know a lot of folks are still learning a little bit more exactly about how the programs work. And so, in case you talked a little bit about the individual assistance, you all are probably very familiar with the public assistance process, where if you have damaged buildings, you all are applying for public assistance, along with cities, with the city, along with schools, along with museums, libraries, and et cetera. And so, the individual assistance, one, I just want to say that there's two parts of the way FEMA has been here on the ground. One of them is their DSA program, which stands for Disaster Survivor Assistance. That group is a group that basically is an outreach team. Think of them as those are the people that can go door-to-door knocking, that can go show up at pop-up sites, and really meet community where they are. So, first, where we've deployed, is we've deployed DSA teams across most of the resource hubs in the area. So, we've set up resource hub sites where people can go to get non-perishable food, meals, but also go get personal care products and supplies that they need to keep their families whole during this period. And so, there are DSA teams that are doing live applications kind of there, and at various sites across the impact area. And so, these DRCs are specifically fixed sites, they're supposed to be, or at least our hope, is there are places that are staples in communities. There are places where people feel comfortable going, people feel like they know who's there, really because one of the things we've seen as the biggest barrier to application, especially when we start talking about the further northern side neighborhoods, is a general distrust of aspects of government, especially federal government, and the belief that assistance is here. And so, part of the rationale behind the sites and the mayor's kind of vision for this was intentionally placing three directly in the actual impacted areas. So, one of those is going to be Union Tabernacle Missionary Baptist Church, which opened up on Saturday. They've seen about 150 to 250 people a day visiting that site within this area. We know the impact and the need was much greater in the North Zone, Zone B, which is between MLK and Natural Bridge, and then further north of there, when you get into Zone C, into O'Fallon and Penrose. And so, we're setting up sites in each of those areas, and the request for today is specifically one in Zone B. And so, that particular site will be what we call a Western Facility. It is going to be, if anyone has gone to any big parties or engagements that are thrown in really large tents outside, it'll be a very large tent, where we'll be bringing air conditioning units and things that'll do that, also outside generators that'll power the site. There'll be onsite porta potties, onsite hand wash stations, onsite waste management, to make sure that we have all of those things kind of taken care of. And this will be one of the sites in Zone B, plus another physical site that will be in Zone C, that'll get announced as soon as we get that agreement signed and make that public, which will also be, our hope is to announce all three of the sites tomorrow, with this site going live on Thursday, and then the final site going live on Monday.
Well, you answered my question about how the site would look, and whether or not they were gonna pump in air, and if we'd have porta potties in. I did know we were gonna have fencing, but the greater audience needs to be able to hear that. It also mentions in the MOU, SkyCops, Police Security, that will be at both sites.
Yes. So, yeah, all of our outdoor sites will have SkyCops. It'll also have, we also have standard patrol for police going and patrolling the area. So, they're aware of the core DRC sites, especially with this one being outside. They'll be frequent kind of around there. We also know it's very hot, so we have an active plan for a cooling strategy to make sure that there's cold water, ice, and things onsite. So, we're addressing everything that we know of as of now, but are super excited to be able to host this at a school like Sumner, where we know the institutions and the people in that area know this place, which makes it a great site for us, so.
There was a concern about transportation when it was at the Shafitz Arena. Will we have transportation provided, our metro cars or anything that?
So, that's the reason for locating in the neighborhoods. Shafitz Arena, just for context, the way we separate the DAC from the DRC. So, the DAC is west of the Shafitz. It's supposed to be all city and state-led resources across the board kind of coming together. So, it's a much bigger operation, much bigger size. These are more contained. So, again, the primary groups that'll be there will be the FEMA, usually depending on the demand, is usually between six to eight, to up to fifteen different people taking applications, with about a twenty to thirty-person waiting area kind of within it, who are waiting in line. And so, that's kind of what this operations will have. It'll also have SBA, which usually has a few teams there. And then we will co-locate as we learn more. We're learning more about the barriers people have to accessing FEMA aid. So, some of that has been direct housing and sheltering and things, that's a permanent address. And so, what we stood up recently at the site on Delmar and Newstead at Union Tabernacle Missionary Baptist Church, is the Red Cross assistance there as well, so people have access to a shelter. Some of the things that we're learning more about a lot of people in these impact zones, is that a lot of them have gotten this property from family. They call it arid property, where they don't have deeds and things to the property. So, one of the things we're starting to look at is doing to be co-locating resources that at least either give information or familiarity there. So, we started adding to the site already neighborhood specialist team members directly from the city, who are bringing flyers of information, but will also co-locate other services as needed at the site to support residents.
That's certainly appreciated. Thank you. Those tiny little things are the things that make the difference, and get people to be able to feel that someone's supporting them. So, we really appreciate it. Additional questions, Mr. Conover?
Yeah, probably anticipate this one. This MOU's going through August eleventh. Do we feel good about that timeline for cleanup?
Yes. So, yes, we know you all star school on August eighteenth. We looked at that before we even asked. Yeah, yes, there should be no issues, us shutting down August eleventh. Again, it's a tent and porta potties, and so, we don't plan on being much to clean up afterwards, and we'll keep it tidy even while we're there.
Sounds good. We're happy this is happening, but, you know, gotta stay on our own timelines as well. So, thanks so much.
This is much easier cleanup than debris.
Absolutely. I would hope so.
And it's a beautiful parking lot.
Are there any additional questions, Mr. Marston? Oh, Ms. Foster?
Thank you. Sorry, having mic issues. I know in the past that there, and this might not be a question for you all specifically, probably posing this to the Cabinet or Superintendent Borchardt. Is there any liability that will fall on the district for having this specifically at Sumner on our lot, on district property?
I can speak to what is in the MOU on the, let me see here, let me pull it up. So, I'm happy to defer to your legal counsel as well. Let me pull it up here and see what we have.
And it might not be a question for you all, it might be a question for our legal counsel. But I want to ask, I want to ask, because it has been presented before, to have different services at school buildings, at school locations, on school property. So, I want this to be public record for everybody to understand.
I'm happy to indicate that the city has taken on all liability for anything that happens during this event.
Thank you.
And actually, that statement is in the MOU, so. Thank you. No, thank you. It needed to be, there would be no way for the general public to know all of this unless we say it out loud. This is live streamed, they can watch it whenever. Yeah, so in order for the public to know what we're doing, we'd have to actually state it. So, I appreciate that. Thank you. And thank you.
And for that reason, one of the locations have shifted for that reason.
Yes, thank you.
Where's that shift, sorry? I might have missed it. Oh, yeah. Sure. I didn't know if you wanted to answer, but yeah.
I didn't know who you were asking.
I didn't know either, yeah.
So, two sites reflected in this are currently Sumner and Lexington. The initial site was considered to be Ashland. But obviously, your building division team has been out there. There's the situation with the roof tiles and the potential for sliding, and everybody agreed, just in the interest of protecting everyone, and also allowing the needed repairs that need to happen there, that that was just probably not the best site for safety purposes. So, yeah, Ashland was a consideration at first, but decided on Lexington as a better, safer option for folks as well.
Okay, thank you, yeah. I think it's on our amendments on the thing, it still says Ashland, so we'll make sure in the motion we're clear about that. So, thank you.
Any additional questions or discussion? We'd like to thank you for a great presentation. You've explained everything in both of our items, thirteen one and thirteen three, so we really appreciate it. And after our vote tonight, hope to move forward the way we need to, to help our city.
Just ready to make the motion.
Call for the motion, Mr. Conover?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the SLPS MOU related to FEMA, with the understanding that the Amendment A inclusions of Ashland and Sumner is actually Lexington and Sumner.
Second.
Further discussion? Call for vote.
Ms. Foster?
Yes.
Mr. Conover?
Yes.
Mr. Hikes?
Yes.
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Marston?
Yes.
Ms. Hubbard?
Yes.
Dr. Collins Adams?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you all.
Thank you all so much.
We're very grateful.
And hope you feel better, too. Our next item is the ratification of the decision regarding the transition of students from damaged schools to new schools as a result of the tornado on May sixteenth. It's item thirteen point two.
Madam President, in light of the additional information that the board received just prior to this meeting, related to storm recovery efforts, I'd like to make a motion to move item thirteen point two to the July eighth agenda. So, move it to the future agenda. So, we have time to review some of the information as well.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? Call for vote? I'm sorry, Mr. Marston, I didn't see your line.
Yeah, just as first discussion, does it make sense to sort of start the discussion now with some of the questions we have, and any comments or concerns we have, and then we can continue on July eighth?
Sure. I mean, I guess my hope with making the motion to move it to the future was that now that some of the questions that I think we have lingering might be answered in this binder we received, that we could ask any additional questions we have in that in-between time. Because I know I'll make reference to a request that was made by this board to get additional information in relation to this decision. Now that we have it, it seems like we can come back with questions for that. But I definitely hear your concern there, and I want to get this addressed as soon as possible, because it's obviously very critical. But having additional information answered that might come through in questions, I think is helpful to have.
Having not been able, we didn't have enough time to be able to go through this big binder. I understand what you're saying, but I do have a question. Is, would this process hold up anything?
Absolutely.
Could you explain?
We have transportation. That is the biggest thing. Teachers being able to go and set up their classrooms. There would be unrest in terms of where students will be going. But if it is the will of the board to wait, we will definitely do that.
I just, sorry.
Ms. Foster, and then Mr. Conover.
Sorry.
Take this slowly and patiently, okay?
Yeah. General question. What was the expectation after receiving this during the meeting? Like, were you gonna voice over the entire packet for us to give question, to ask questions, presentation, et cetera?
When you say the packet, this packet?
I mean, this binder.
This binder was just given as an update of what is happening in terms of the tornado. It was not given in reference to thirteen point two at all.
Okay, thank you. Yes.
As a matter of fact.
I just wanted to keep everybody up to date on what is happening day-to-day, week-to-week, month-to-month. But this had nothing to do with thirteen point two.
So, is this a culmination of some of the things you've already given us that are in this binder?
This is a culmination of the things that has already been shared.
For our reference, so that we can, okay, thank you.
It's just all in one place now, versus it being an update one, update two, update three, update, all the way up to update six. It's just all in one place.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Mr. Conover? Yeah, I'd already recognized him.
Well, I guess I would, I hate to do this, but I would dispute that. There's a lot of information in here that we haven't seen at this point, just from a quick glance. And so, that's why I was requesting the additional time to review it in order to make this decision regarding the ratification of the transfer process. I mean, there's logs of meetings that we've asked about before that we did not have previously. I mean, there's logs of meetings that we've asked about before that we did not have previously. There's information about the principal meetings and as well as ongoing efforts in relation to the transition that I hadn't previously seen before. This is a big decision. The more information we have, the better. And that's my interest in getting a chance to review this information.
Thank you.
My greater concern was that it was, that we didn't have any new information. This is the stuff that we've already, you're not processing this. This is something that has been occurring. It moving along.
Yes.
Okay.
We the board or we the district?
No, the district. I needed to know. How did we, how did we get all of the information? And Dr. Barisha Day has said that this is a culmination of all of the information of the things that they've done over the series of events that have occurred as a result of the tornado. So meetings, assessments, insurance, information, all of that's in here?
Yes.
Thank you. I have one other question. And thank you, Mr. Morrison, so that we could get our questions out now so that we can move forward. What's the perceived timeline? And Dr. Barisha Day, and you have Mr. Watson here, for the logistical moves from one school to the next, from teachers packing classrooms, how many days a week? Boxing that material and getting it to the next site? Principals declaring and determining which classrooms will be used? HR doing the assignments to the buildings? And notifying everyone that, you know, where they're going, not only that they're going there, but where they're going to be when they get there? If it's going to be a school within a school, if it's going to be two separate schools and two separate principals, that we have a schedule of all of that. I understand the information for students and parents. And that could be a logistical nightmare if parents don't know because they don't check your mailing out, and they may not check that. So we'd have to do other kind of blasts. We need to have enough time for communications to be able to do a communication blast that is verbal, that goes to their telephones, that sends text messages and emails. We have the technology to do that. So we need to be able to alert parents in multiple ways. But do we have enough time to do that? Because from July 8th through the, when are they moving off those sites? August 11th? That gives us exactly one month to move, clean up, focus, and get everybody ready. Mr. Morrison, you have a question? Discussion?
Yeah, I guess I wanted to just share some thoughts that I have and some questions, not with the expectation that they'll, if they're an easy one, you can answer it tonight. But I just sort of wanted to throw out kind of what I'm thinking so that there aren't any surprises, at least coming from me. So one thought is that we consolidated these same schools for the last week after the tornado. And as far as I know, it went okay. I know there've been concerns about fights. Of course, you know, that was just one week of school and attendance was down that week. I guess on the subject of whether there will be fights in some of these schools or more fights in some of these schools. I'll say there is a code of conduct for our students. And I would hope that they could rise to the occasion instead of sinking to lowered expectations that if you expect them to fight, then they're going to know that. Although, you know, I also don't want to set up a situation knowingly that would, you know, prevent students from learning. And I guess, I'm trying to get a sense of like sort of even how many students would be involved in something like that. And it's, you know, we can't, you're trying to predict it and you can't really. So I guess I would say that, you know, going into this, we should be mindful that that's a possibility and prepare to mitigate it as best we can and also to report on how that's going for the first month. And I'm just going to, I got some notes here. I'm just running through it. So it's, you know, I had a question about whether there is room for the students at the receiving schools. It looks like if you add up the enrollments of the schools that are being consolidated, sometimes the combined enrollment is bigger than the capacity of the school. I guess I would like to hear more from the principals and the teachers and the parents and the students at the affected schools. It seems like possibly some principals maybe are telling the superintendent one thing and their union a different thing. I guess a big question is whether there's any better plan for consolidation or any viable alternate plan. I know Ray Cummings with Local 420 suggested relocating Sumner to Stevens instead of Clyde C. Miller. I guess, I'm going to run through this because I would be quiet. So it, my understanding is Clyde C. Miller draws students from throughout the city. Is that true? Yet so in terms of turf, you know, I'm not sure how that, like what the turf is for Clyde C. Miller. And, you know, if we were to use Stevens instead, my understanding is that Stevens sustained roof damage in the tornado and that it was, I think it was closed and that reopened for a head chapman. But I'm wondering how well Stevens is set up to actually be a full-time high school. And then Ray Cummings with Local 420 also suggested moving Yeatman to either Ford Elementary or Gallaudet instead of Gateway Mill. And again, my understanding is that Ford closed in 2021. Gallaudet closed in 2010, I think. And Gallaudet's five miles away from Yeatman. So it seems sort of difficult. Not to say that if it's difficult that, you know, if it's a better option, then we could do that. But it just seems like it's a school that's been closed for a long time and is farther away. So, and I think it's important to make the distinction between what we need to do in the short term for these schools that have been damaged by the tornadoes and not confuse that with the reimagining SLPS process and with longer-term school consolidation. Like, these are two separate things. So those are just some things that are on my mind. And I just, you know, kind of wanted to bring them up so that they're not getting sprung on anybody on the day that we're voting.
I would just like to say that whatever the will of the board is, is what we will do.
Yeah. I'm going to make it, make it just a statement about it. Mr. Morrison, I appreciate that. It is very difficult, and I know firsthand, it's very difficult to retrofit a building that's been either closed or not used for that specific purpose, to be able to move students into it and create a school. So that's, that would be the first thing. And I wish we had had more time to be able to make decisions. We're doing this now and we're discussing this. And we have to decide to be able to move forward because the time will run very fast. The other portion of it, I need to address it as a member of the community and in a voice for what we're saying about our students. We have to be very careful when we put the idea that if we combine our students in a building, that they will immediately become so territorial that they would hurt or harm themselves and others to be able to claim the name of a school. I give more credit to our students and our staff and our teachers, our security officers, our superintendent, and our board members who have been here for a long period of time to know and to have lived through some of the changes that have gone in this, that have occurred in this district, to know that we can, we can step forward and work to be certain that we're positive so that won't happen. I really do, I respect our parents and our students. And had I not ever been in a situation like that, I would say, oh, that's definitely going to happen. But I know we can avoid all of that. We have to, we have to put, as a board, as a district, as the parents who are listening to this, and you know, media picks up everything that we say. Social media goes crazy on the things that we, we talk about in our board meetings. But what they need to hear right now is that if we're going to take a positive approach to educating our students in St. Louis Public Schools, then we have to start talking the talk while we walk that walk. We have to speak in positive terms. We have to look at our children as being educated and being capable of being educated and as good citizens in this, in our school district and in this city. We can't put out negative information. Back to what we have to decide, we have a short amount of time to be able to decide on what we're going to ratify because it's already been decided. Now, I may not agree, and none of the board members have to agree on any of what's presented to us. I wish I had known it more ahead of time to help make a better decision. But I have to deal with what we have now. And if we belabor this subject, if we kill the dead horse, we're not going to get our children in schools on time. And that's the, we have, remain focused. In order for us to be able to meet our standards, we have to get students in the door, and we have to teach them. And in order to do that, the other individuals sitting around this table have to create a plan to be able to get our students in. And I would like every board member to understand that I have the utmost respect for Local 420. And I do believe they represent teachers and the voices of many teachers who are curious. I don't think they're fearful. They're just curious about what will happen next. I've said my piece. Ms. Jones?
Okay. With all due respect for the board members and the community and what have you, I'm definitely a community member from Wilder Park. And the viciousness is real and the life and death situation is real. I've experienced it every day. I see these young people walking around with these hoods on, carrying their guns to the gas station. And they are SLPS students. They're, they come charter schools. They're all over. And our children have been disrespected so much in the city of St. Louis. We've been very disrespectful. And I don't know if we all of a sudden want to, you know, say, hey, you guys, you work together and whatever. They're in critical condition right now. And I know when we start rebuilding St. Louis, a lot of our students are going to get overlooked like usual. Our buildings don't look this way for no reason. It's because the public hasn't taken it seriously. I know we passed Prop S, but we still didn't do what we needed to do for our students and our citizens. It looks horrible. Many of our buildings would have fallen like they were if it weren't for 1947 document called Team Four, which called for the resources being denied north St. Louis. And it definitely has come to fruition. And now we're suffering from gentrification. And our students feel it, and I'm sorry, I'm just one of those people that just understands that, yeah, you mix these students more right now, yeah, there's going to be a problem. Just like a lot of our students that come to school and they have some serious emotional issues. We have a lot of students who are suffering from mental health issues that need addressing now, and they have not. People won't step up the way they need to. I'm really afraid. As somebody that lives in the neighborhood, every day I'm watching these kids and I'm scared for them. So unless the adults in this community are going to step up and help the schools, then I understand what the teachers are saying and why many of them are fearful and why a lot of the parents are fearful because it's scary. Our kids are, there are a lot of mental health issues. And I'm just going to say it like that. It's scary. So I really, I'm ready for a Zoom meeting after we look at this information. And I really want to look at what's going on in this paperwork before I make a decision on how I'm moving because I'm living the life right now. I don't live in a rich neighborhood. I live in a neighborhood where people are struggling and where people are suffering. Every day I see zombies walking the street and they're young, real young. So let's do this then.
The motion on the floor is just to extend this to the next meeting, given that there's new information. I'm not making any statements about anything else in relation to this process. We have not had the information as a board to be able to ratify this decision, in my opinion. There's clearly community concerns around this. I'm not sure how much the teachers' union or the administrators' association, not union, has been engaged on these matters. I know the board asked for information two weeks ago and just now received a pretty extensive packet that although it wasn't directly related to this item, I think, has significant information that would inform a decision on this. And that's why I'm asking for additional time in relation to this decision.
I appreciate it. Thank you. And thank you, Ms. Jones. Ms. Foster?
Yes, I just want to echo a lot of the sentiments that Board Member Jones has said. Even as a recent graduate of St. Louis Public Schools, I graduated in 2016 from Metro, but went to Gateway Elementary, Gateway Middle when schools were influx and transferred over to our schools. I just want to put that out there that I do understand and I do recognize, and this is personal. The second thing that I want to give the superintendent opportunity to voice over because this is live streamed, this is not over email, this is not in a closed session. And so any opportunity that you have to shortly explain where these decisions came from, how they were made, who was in the room, when they were agreed upon or recommended? Because again, as Board Member Conover said, a lot of the information in this packet is new. I read my email every single day, and a lot of this information is new.
So I want to speak to the packet.
Thank you.
The very first page talks about, it's an executive summary. And the board received the executive summary. The claims for the schools, the information was shared that claims were submitted. And now these are the specifics, but the information was shared that claims were submitted. So we have each of the individual claims. And so I just want to reiterate the fact that the information about claims being submitted was shared. This is the book that I was keeping for myself, and I wanted to make a copy so that each and every one of you all had the exact information that I had. And so the next section in here talks about the assessment and the estimated damages. That information was shared that an assessment was done for each of the schools. That information was shared, that an assessment. But now here is the actual paperwork that the assessment was done. So when it comes to the meeting, the next section, this was a meeting that occurred with Cortigan Clark. Information was shared that a meeting was had as it relates to new demographics that we have. But this is the actual paperwork, but the information was shared. Information was shared that we met with our insurance. That information was shared. Now, this is the actual paperwork that information from, we met with travelers. The memorandum that we had with the city, we did that all together. And this was, now it's in one place for you. When we talk about the number of families, this is new information as it relates to the number of families that have been served by the Little Bit Foundation. But the information about us partnering with the Little Bit Foundation was shared. Now, this is the actual paperwork, right? When it comes to visits or when it comes to the next section on home deliveries, information was shared that I was making home deliveries to families with the care notes. Now that information is in one place. When it comes to meetings with principals, the information was shared that we were meeting with principals of the buildings that were going to be co-located as well as the whole schools. That information was shared. Now we have the paperwork right here. The information was shared that we have applied for FEMA. The information that we have applied for FEMA is right here. The information that we received from, from travelers indicating that they have taken our claim.
indicating that they have taken our claim for each of the buildings based on the meeting that we had, the information was shared. These actual documents were forwarded to each of the board members. And what I did was I put it in a packet and I've given it to all of the board members to make sure that everyone has it. So I'm not sure of the new information other than the actual sheet about the numbers of families that the Little Bit Foundation was working with.
Yeah, and I can't profess to speak for any other board members. I know, again, new information are the details that you just indicated right now. Specific paperwork, specific times and dates when meetings were held, who was in the room, who signed in during the room? Because, for example, you mentioned that you were meeting with principals. When you voiced that over, we were, I think we were under the impression as a board, you were meeting with principals to talk about upcoming PD and not relocation of schools. That's all I'm saying.
Thank you, Ms. Foster, Mr. Conover.
Yeah, I just wanna first of all say, there's not any sort of claim here going on that information hasn't been provided to us throughout this process.
Got it, okay.
There were questions two weeks ago. I don't wanna get into the details because it was not an open session discussion. But we asked for additional information in relation to how those meetings with the principals went, what was the content of those meetings? As Board Member Foster says, some of that's in here now. I know there's incredible concern, as Ms. Jones so eloquently, in my opinion, raised, related to what's going on in the communities in relation to some of these school movements. I'm not really sure where we stand on that, those kind of questions. And I think that's something I would love to continue to discuss before hopefully we vote on this again in two weeks.
I also wanted you all to be mindful of the fact that we have hosted summer school with our high school students. One at Roosevelt, one at Clyde C. Miller, and we pull students from everywhere. And it has been really, really successful.
That's, I mean, that's great, that's good information for us to have. So thank you for letting us know, we really appreciate that. I think there's some, like I said, additional questions about what conversations I've had with the local union, the teachers' union, all these teachers are gonna be affected going to the different schools. How's that conversation going, where is it at? The discussion with the Administrators Association, not just the specific principals, but the administrators at large. I think these are all questions that at least I have. I know Board Member Marston raised some of his own questions. This packet goes a long way. You know, I understand that you're saying you've provided a lot of this information. There is some additional information here that I think would be helpful for us to review. I think it'll help us clarify what additional information we need from there. That's, I mean, I'll be very open and say like, that's why I made a motion to move this two weeks from now. Because yes, the decision is in place right now. We, as a board, I've made very clear in previous correspondence, I believe have to ratify this decision. The decision's going on until we do something about it. The decision has been made, as President Collins Adams says. Until we ratify it, it's not finalized, for sure. But it's, we're going in that direction until something changes, right? And so this gives us additional time to talk that through, get to the point where we can make some decisions. There are clearly concerns still. I don't think we're gonna get all those answered at a work session meeting. Hopefully we can get those answered in the next two weeks and make a decision in two weeks. That's kind of where my head's at with all of this. There was no, there's no antagonism involved here, there's no claims of being bamboozled or anything like that. It's just, this is a very important decision. As Ms. Jones has said, there are significant safety and security concerns at stake, right? These are our communities, especially as Ms. Jones said, her community, that are involved in these decisions. This is the SLPS, SLPS community, which we govern. It's a very important decision. So I guess I don't see the big issue with a little more time to make a decision like that. But I understand that there are pressures, I'll let the board decide that.
Thank you, Mr. Conover, Ms. Jones?
Okay, I would like to know, will this board allow or in the superintendent meeting, to have a meeting with 420 or the teachers and the staff before any, before we move forward? To see what their impressions are of what's going on? And why have we selected the schools the way that we have selected them? Or we didn't select, but whomever selected them? Why the pairing of those particular schools?
I don't think we need to give approval for a meeting, but I would certainly be with Board Member Jones in encouraging a meeting with 420 on this. I'd also just say like, this is gonna sound a little rudimentary or elementary. Just an executive summary of why these decisions were made. And I know for me, I'd love to see a data table of capacity at the schools. And, you know, how many students, right, are gonna move over to these schools and how much space do we have? Is it really gonna increase classroom sizes? Do the teachers have space, right? These are all questions that we can get answered here, I think, in this next two-week period. But we have to just do that work. But I don't know if we're gonna do it right now.
No, and those were some of the things that I said when I went into my rant on the timeline, that we need to have the information on some of the things that you just, you just mentioned. That would help us make a firm decision.
Yeah, I just, again, wanna support Board Member Jones's comments here about meeting with the union, what's going on in her communities especially directly, and that we really need to pay attention to what she has to say on this. She's beyond an expert on these things, so.
It would be the two entities that would meet, the board and the teachers' union, the spearheaded by the superintendent is what you're asking?
I'll leave Board Member Jones to clarify what she's asking, but I, I'm perfectly happy with whatever on that front.
I'm just asking that, that the superintendent or staff, whomever, meet with the union and the teachers and whomever they need to, to talk about this. Talk about why they're bringing these two schools together or why this school should be over here or that school over there, so they'll feel comfortable because they're the ones doing the work. I mean, we can say, you go over there, you go over there, but come on now. You have to be respectful to people and ask them what, how do they feel, you know? And this, I know you can say, you do this and you do that because we're paying you. But we don't wanna, I don't wanna look like we're just being cruel and putting them in a situation like we don't care. Because this is very, this is a critical, a critical move. So I'm just hoping that we can work together.
Thank you, Ms. Jones. Dr. Barisha Day, I guess a formal request is that you prepare something to be able to meet with a group of teachers and through the teachers' union and their leadership, if that works within the timeframe that you have right now of the meeting and one other things you have already scheduled. But we would be pleased if you could just set up something with Local 420.
In addition to the administrators as well, in addition to administrators, not just 420, but...
The Administrative Association? Because I envision it as the Dr. Barisha Day speaking with the leaders and each one of the leaders has a section, so I don't, you know, it's just a request. Sidebar, Ms. McLaughlin? Mr. Marston?
Yeah, I think it would be helpful at the next board meeting to have a presentation explaining the rationale for each of the school pairings and why each of those pairings were deemed the best choice. Because, you know, at the open session, I think the public would be, would be interested in hearing that.
Thank you, Mr. Conover, Mr. Marston, Ms. Foster. Any additional comments, discussion? Questions?
I don't know if I'm doing this in the right space, but I, Ms. Jones has actually lived this. But in the history of SLPS, when we have closed schools, it has been done unjustly very often to closed great schools. And then they sold it to SLU and SLU built Scheffel Arena there. So there is a whole host of reasons why any decision that we make like this, we need to be as transparent as possible about our motives. And, you know, what, I don't wanna say algorithm, but like what are the things that we value that are making this decision happen? And I don't think that happened here. And kids have to get to school, I don't know that we can change anything. But there's, the distrust of government is real and it's real for real reasons. And I, we have to take that into account.
Thank you, Ms. Hubbard. I feel confident that our board will make a good decision, so. And I appreciate all of the comments. Some of them have been very enlightening and I truly appreciate. You speak your heart and you use professionalism to be able to explain why you're, you believe what you believe. So I appreciate that. Dr. Barisha Day, thank you. The report is very extensive and I know that we'll be able to move forward from this point. Has that motion been seconded? Okay, so, Ms. Vaughn?
Ms. Foster?
Yes.
Mr. Conover?
Yes.
Mr. Hikes?
Yes.
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Marston?
Yes.
Ms. Hubbard?
Yes.
Dr. Collins Adams?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Discussion? Ms. Vaughn?
Oh, Ms., sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Just a little small comment, I'm sorry, I don't wanna keep us long. Can you just voice over a little bit of what the second part of the packet was that we were given tonight?
Yes.
Just really quickly, I'm sorry.
Those are the summary of the audits that each of you all have received.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Ms. Foster, I forgot I put mine under my chair. I believe a vote is on the floor?
Ms. Foster?
Yes.
Mr. Conover?
Yes.
Mr. Hikes?
Yes.
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Marston?
Yes.
Ms. Hubbard?
Yes.
Dr. Collins Adams?
Yes.
We are adjourned at 8:19 PM.